We'll go ahead and call. Go ahead and call this regular scheduled county commissioners meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with our first public comment. Is there any comments from the public? We'll go ahead and we'll move on to number four, verification at the posting of the agenda.
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on September 14th between the hours of 10:00 and 11:00 at the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Could I get a motion to approve the agenda that's submitted?
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll second it. Those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, motions approved. Move to number six, approval of the minutes of the meeting held on August 16th, 2023.
I move to approve the minutes of the meeting held on August 16th, 2023.
I'll second that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, motions approved. Move to our appointments. First will be presentation of employee service awards for the third quarter of 2023. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll allow you guys to take your standard presentation position. Once again, we have the opportunity to recognize those county employees who have significant service with accounting, and so we'll get our picture ticker ready. And we'll start with our five years of service with.
I'll have to do an augmentation at the end of the year for the balance. Subsequent years will be less. So at this time, we're asking that we approve the, that the board approves the one-year contract with Citizen Serve so that we can move forward with that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from border staff?
So Chris, they'll be able to move the maps and everything over?
Yes.
And that's what the initial upfront cost is?
Yeah, the initial upfront cost, aside the $19,000 for users, is for training and for data migration. So we'll be able to take not only information from the AS400, but also the information from DevNet and what we have in GovPilot and be able to put that, migrate that over to the new system. And it also integrates with our GIS, and it will integrate with Tyler, and will also integrate with DevNet. So I think we've got a pretty robust system that we'll be able to use. And everybody in my department has viewed everything and they're all on board, so there'll be no more. This isn't going to work for me.
All right. Any public comment? Will I entertain a motion?
I move to approve a one-year service agreement with Citizen Serve to provide a computer platform to replace the AS400.
I'll second it. Those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, motions approved.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to appointment F, which is consideration of possible action, purchase of a 2023 John Deere Z Track mower for the cemetery at a cost of $20,512.60.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Barbie. Jorge had to step out to work on the electrical issue that we're having, which is what's causing the internet issue. So with that, I will come in and pitch backup on this. So what's happened is we have the existing mower that we have at the cemetery. We're no longer able to get the parts necessary to keep it running and for sure not running through the next spring season that we've got. We could probably limp through for another month, which we may still have to limp through through another month. But we believe we found a mower that we can replace it with. And these things obviously are not cheap, but it's a specific size mower that works in the cemetery and allows them to do the mowing and be able to clean up as closely as possible to the headstones and everything, which reduces the number of hours that we have to spend in terms of man-hours in trimming around each one of the headstones. They still have to do some of that, but this really allows them to get the job done. So it appears the best option that we had was utilizing the local company, Pape, for a 2023 John Deere Z 950R ZT Track mower at the identified cost. That is kind of an emergency purchase that we're having to do currently outside of what was budgeted.
Thank you.
Any questions from border staff? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the director to purchase a 2023 John Deere Z 950RZ Track mower for the amount of $20,112.60 for the cemetery.
I second that. Those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motions approved. So next, we'll move to number eight, which is appeal of planning commission decision, public hearing. Is Mr. Carey here? Carey, is that, okay. You're going to swear?
Yeah.
There's no time on it?
Okay, so anyone who is going to testify, please come forward. So Mr. Basford, you'll need to come up and be sworn in. Yes, come on in. So remain standing, please. Raise your right hand. Do you and each of you solemnly swear that the information you're about to provide in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
I do.
All right, and state your name, please.
Chris Spross.
Okay, Chris, I'm going to read the subject title.
Carey Basford.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I'm going to go ahead and read the subject title before you begin. Okay. So this is consideration of possible action, appeal of the planning commission's decision made on August 9th, 2023, to deny a temporary use permit for temporary living quarters on property located at 895 Howard Place, Fallon, Churchill County, Nevada, assessor's parcel number 007-851-19. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Spross for the record. So this, this item is an appeal on the decision made by the planning commission. And I will give you a little bit of background. So Mr. Basford applied for a temporary use permit to live in an RV during home construction back in 2020, was the first time that there was an application. That temporary use permit has been renewed in 2021, 2022, and then the meeting back in August was the 2023 request for an extension. I will say, Mr. Basford has spent considerable amount of money on this property already. The septic is installed, the power's installed, and there's a well in. I think, I'm not going to speak on behalf of the planning commission, but I believe the frustration on the part of the planning commission was that this is obviously important to Mr. Basford. He has spent a considerable amount of money, but he failed to show up for the meeting. So the planning commission was unable to ask him any questions with regards to progress on the property and things like that. So at that point in time, it was the decision made by the planning commission to deny the temporary use permit solely, I believe, on the fact that questions were not be able to, were not able to be answered.
Mr. Basford, do you have anything to add currently? See that, that little button that looks like a microphone, that's what you push?
I'm sorry?
There's a button. Yeah, right there.
Hello.
You got it.
What happened was, a gentleman talked about, was, first off, I apologize because the mail deliverer was a new deliverer from the post office, and she put that letter, courtesy letter for me to come to that August meeting in the wrong mailbox. So I didn't get that courtesy letter until the day after. And then I found it, and I came in, and I asked what to do, and I was told then to go ahead and do a, an appeal, which I did. And as the gentleman said, I have invested a lot in this, and I'm wanting to move forward. So what happened was, at that time, when I first applied for my temporary permit, I actually had already started the process of getting the floor plans done. And I came into planning, and Jera said that the plans that I had had to be done to code. And I said I didn't have that information, so she gave me a printout. And so I took that, and I gave that to my cousin, who's a professional contractor, and he went ahead and made up the first floor plan. And I brought that into Jera in planning. And Jera went ahead and looked at it and said, well, we need a couple of additions, and would you please do those? And so I went ahead and did that. And I'm not getting into all the dates and so forth, but I, Carey kept moving on it. Then I came in with that change that she needed, addition, and she then went ahead and looked over a couple of things with me. And I went ahead and submitted the final floor plan, and she looked at it and said, okay, good. She said, I'll go ahead then and review it. And that brings us up to date, basically. So that was a good two weeks or more ago, and I hadn't heard from planning about my final floor plan, which is right here, that I had submitted to her, and she was going to go ahead and review it. Well, because I hadn't heard from her, I went ahead and went into the office today at planning, and Jera wasn't there, but Jeff was there. And I asked Jeff about it. I asked him, I said, I haven't received any information about my floor plan. And he said, well, let me look it up. So he went ahead and looked it up. He said, I don't see it. Well, I just happened to be standing there in the office, because Jera wasn't there, and he said, come on in. And right on her computer was my floor plan with a weight on it. And he said he couldn't find it on the computer. So I was looking down, and I said, I think that's my floor plan. And he said, that is. So he went ahead and looked it up. And he said, well, it's still in review. And I said, would you please put that in writing for the commission? So here it is. Here's my floor plan that I submitted over two weeks ago, and he went ahead and put in here, as of 9/20/23, this project is still in review. So when it's, once it's reviewed for the last time, and it's been accepted, and then I am ready to go ahead and pay the impact fees and the plan, and the planning, and the permit fee, the building permit fee, that's where we're at.
So now we're going to ask you a few questions?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Oh, please excuse me. My allergy, my left ear is hopped up. I'm sorry. So I'm talking a little loud.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Mr. Chair, I just, I just want to make one correction to what Mr. Basford said. He had referenced that, that Jera is in the planning department. Jera is actually in the building department, and that's where those permits are issued out of. So the planning department is for the permit, and, and the, the building plans and things like that are reviewed and approved by the building department.
And this is a hearing for your temporary use permit so that you can stay on the property? So when you get the plans approved, are you going to start construction on the, your house currently?
Yes, when, when the plans are approved, I'm ready to pay, I'll be paying the impact fees and the planning, the building permit.
Okay, great. Miles?
So in the last year, Mr. Basford, what kind of progress have you made on that property? In the last year, what kind of progress have you made on the property itself?
Well, up to date, I've done everything that's there in order to be able to move forward on the actual building of the foundation, meaning the well is there. That's been there for many, many years, the well, pump house, electricity underground's been there for many years, and the brand-new septic system last year. So right now, I'm ready to go ahead then and break ground and, and put in the foundation, start the foundation with the building permit, with, with these floor plans here.
So with the, the planning, or the, when you had your permit kind of disapproved previously, they have to follow the guidelines. It's our responsibility now to make other decisions on that, and that's what we're doing right now. And so with, do you have an estimated time on when your house would be finished currently, if you were able to start, like in the next month?
Well, not really, because I'm having to take it one step at a time.
Okay.
So what I've done, sir, is I've gone ahead, and I've gotten an estimate from a building contractor in front of AK Aka, and he came out, I have his card in my wallet. He came out two weeks ago, and he is going to be mailing me an estimate. I've talked to NVO, which is a prefab in Reno, and they gave me an estimate, but I decided not to do that because it's a different foundation. And I went ahead and contacted Kent Lumber with Carla, and she gave me an estimate for materials. I've talked to John Hancock about trenching. So I'm taking it one step at a time, moving, moving along as much as I can. But at this point, the next thing would be, I'm hoping, I don't know, because we've got winter around the corner, and this planning, you know, this, getting this floor plan has taken some time. But I'm wanting to move forward, so I don't know if I should start a foundation come spring, or I should wait till, I mean, fall, or if I should just go ahead and wait till spring to start the foundation.
And those contractors will know. Chris, how long is this permit good for, if it's approved?
A temporary use permit is good for one year.
One year?
One year.
Okay.
And, and it is subject to renewal, as long as the applicant shows progress towards the completion of.
Which it looks like he, he has been making progress, putting the septic in in the last year, getting the plans forward.
A hurdle that, that some people have a hard time overcoming is when, when you go bring your permit in or your, your plans in, you have to pay your permit fees, you have to pay your inspection fees, you have to pay your impact fees, and that's a pretty, that's a sizable chunk of money. And so it, it comes to the matter of, okay, I've got this much I've got to pay. Well, I was going to use that towards building my house. And a lot of times, that really cuts into the time that somebody can build. It sounds like Mr. Basford is ready and he's prepared. And yes, you can pour a, a foundation in the wintertime if you blanket it, so it can be done to kind of keep the project on track.
Miles, anything else?
No, nothing else.
Joe, do we have to do a public comment on this?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any public comment? Noting no public, so. So I'm ready to vote on this. If you are, Miles?
Sure thing. You want a motion?
Can I have a motion?
Yep. I move to reverse the decision of the planning commission and to approve the renewal of the temporary use permit for Carey Basford at 895 Howard Place for another year to expire on August 31st, 2024. Significant progress towards construction or placement of a permanent residence must be shown at the next renewal.
I second that. Those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion's approved. You got your permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Basford, the biggest thing, though, because I was on the planning commission for a couple of years, is next year, when that August 31st deadline shows up, make sure you have progress, because it'd be a shame to get all of this done and pay your impact fees and everything like that, and then lose headway on it, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right, Miles, any letters you want to pull out?
No.
We'll move to 10, new business. She'll be. Sherry, what's that word? Apportionment of the fiscal year 2023 greater than anticipated geothermal revenue in the amount of $629,522.03.
Thank you. Hi, this is just a, basically a housekeeping item. We had $650,000 budgeted for geothermals. The geothermal revenues came in at $1,279,522.03, and I'm just asking to move $280,000 to the building reserve fund and the rest remaining. It has been apportioned already at 26% to general fund, 26% to social services, 15% to debt service, and 18% to building reserve, and 15% to extraordinary repairs. So I'm just putting in another $280,000 and leaving the rest in the other funds. And I just need you to approve that, please, if you agree.
Any questions from border staff? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the apportionment of the greater-than-anticipated fiscal year 2023 geothermal revenue as recommended by the comptroller.
Second that. Those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Sherry, again, we'll move next to B, apportionment of the fiscal year 2023 greater-than-anticipated CTX revenue in the amount of $705,443.36.
Thank you. This again is a housekeeping, excuse me, item for the sales tax. And the sales tax came in at $8,667,443.36. And so we had greater-than-anticipated revenue of $705,443.36. And I'm pretty much requesting that we keep that as it was apportioned. And the only difference would be during the budget augmentations, we had augmented the Parks and Recs portion of CTX by $50,000. So I'm just asking to move in, move $50,000 from the general fund to the Parks and Rec. And that's what I'm requesting. And let me know if you have any questions, please.
Any questions or comment from border staff? Any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the apportionment of the CTX revenue as recommended by the comptroller.
Second it. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Move next to new business C, consideration of possible action, approval of the city of Fallon's intent to annex five acres, more or less located at 1700 Harrigan Road, 875 Wood Drive, and 865 Wood Drive. Is this you, Joe?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We received this request for an intent to annex by the city of Fallon. At this time, there's been no objections from any members of the public or from the planning commission, who also received this item last couple, two weeks ago. It is contiguous with already existing parts of the city. And so at this time, I have no reason to have an objection and ask that you approve, approve this annexation.
Any questions from border staff? And Joe, there was no one at the city council meeting that objected, that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. So any public comment? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the city of Fallon's intent to annex five acres, more or less located at 1700 Harrigan Road, 875 Wood Drive, and 865 Wood Drive.
I second that. Those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Next is new business D, consideration of possible action, approval of professional services agreement with Winged Wolf Consulting as a pass-through funding contract with the Rural Nevada Continuum of Care. Shannon, is she online or?
Shannon, I think, is in a meeting, so I'll go ahead and cover this. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a professional servants agreement with Winged Wolf, I think Innovations LLC is the actual name, but they're a consulting group. And they work with ensuring that agencies and governments are in compliance with HUD requirements in terms of getting funding for all of our programs. This is for rural Nevada, so all of the rural Nevada counties are involved in this group. Churchill County is acting as the fiscal agent, and so we're entering into this agreement. We'll be paying $200 an hour for consulting services with an apportionment for travel as well. But all of the funding will actually be coming from grants and from our other stakeholders as well. We have a small, I think, $5,000 interest as part of our interest in the entire community. At this time, I just ask that you approve this agreement.
Any questions from border staff? Any public comment? I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the professional services agreement with Winged Wolf Consulting as presented.
I second that. Those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Move next to consent items. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I second it. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Next, we move to 12, consider future agenda items. Anything to add for next meeting? Jim? Okay, we'll move next to commissioner and management staff reports. So last week, I had a Lahand Valley district meeting for the water, and there are some more funds coming out through, I think it's the USDA and things. So people who have ranches and farms, go check it out. They got some money coming in, so. All right, nothing else to pass?
Last week, I had a fireboard meeting, and then this morning, I had an RTC meeting. Then yesterday, I had a meeting, lengthy meeting, with Mark Best concerning some CCCOM stuff. And it was a very, very good meeting to catch up with him on.
Jim?
So this past week, we did submit the SNPLMA grant funds for three different projects. That was submitted over the weekend. I'm not sure why they made that their submittal day, but that's when they did. And so Chris Spross was kind of leading that process for us. I believe we applied for a little north of $70 million?
Seventy-four.
$74 million in project funding for the 3C complex, the OSER regional park, and then the soccer, or soccer, softball fields on North Main, both the men's, that's under the state or city control, as well as the, the girls' soccer that is county property. Additionally, we are meeting later this week with the appraiser, looking at the university ag ground that's across 95 from the 3C complex. And we'll be potentially applying for SNPLMA funds to purchase that and, and to expand some of the athletic fields over there, as well as work cooperatively with university and Department of Ag, NRCS, and cooperative extension on an ag-lit project in the future with SNPLMA funds. Additionally, this weekend, I had the opportunity to help with the, one of the two statewide FFA fundraising sporting clay shoots in Gardinerville. And there was roughly 180 folks at that, and it was a great success and real positive. And then today, we had our regional transportation meeting, my regular meeting with the city, dealing with city, county issues and overlay. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Sherry?
We're just working on getting the year closed. For the auditors, we'll be here in three weeks. That's all I have. Thank you.
Joe?
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Sheriff?
So we met with state auditor today for the Board of Health MAT program. He came in with a questionnaire, wanted to know a bunch of information. So we sat down with him for probably two hours. He'll be referring some folks from the state, as well as from Sparks, to further follow up with us and meet with us, reference the MAT program in the jail, and some DOJ requirements that are coming up very soon for the jail. So we'll have to be working with Joe, who's probably right now making more therapy sessions with his therapist, because he's going to have to work this on this. But yeah, there were some changes that were made that seemed to be fairly big unfunded mandates. And so I talked with him about my concern with that. He said that that's what's being echoed by a lot of the sheriffs around the state. It's some concerns about unfunded mandates that are coming down. And so we're going to have to see where, where that goes with that MAT program. We did sit through a webinar the other day with a company called Flock Safety. Flock Safety is a LPR company. LPR is license plate reader camera company. And so the reason that we sat down and talked with them is, within our community, we had two armed robberies. They were handled by the city of Fallon, but our agency was involved in helping with some of that. But the suspect was tracked through the use of LPR to California, where he was ultimately arrested. And so, and talking with the other agencies that surround our, our county, a lot of them have the same program. And Monroe County, Douglas County, Land County, Carson City, Washoe, I don't know, there's another one that I'm missing, all purchased the same camera system. And so we looked at it, we talked with them about it. It's something that we'll probably do some more talking about and some more webinars before we actually come back and present to you guys. I request probably at the next budget cycle, if we actually like them. But I wanted to give you kind of a heads- actually like them. But I wanted to give you kind of a heads up that we are looking at them. The reason for us to look at them would be not for enforcement action, because we will not be monitoring them real time, but we will be able to search them. So if we have an incident in town, such as a kidnapping, a silver alert, an armed robbery, or homicide suspect, stolen vehicle, whatever, we can input that information in there, and we can, it'll tell us if it came by. It gives us a lot more information about what's come by. But again, we're not monitoring it for those people that blow through stop signs or that are speeding. It's not hooked up, and it's not designed for that. But if a stolen vehicle's coming through, or if there's a kidnapped suspect out of Idaho that's running through, it'll alert us. It'll give us an alert that that vehicle's passed through. And so with the other counties having the same system, we are able to log into their system if they allow it, and search if it's come through their area. The same would be for us here. So it would be one more, one more link in northern Nevada, where we would be, I think, working with our partners and being a good partner with our surrounding agencies to try and track down bad guys or missing and lost persons. So it's something we're looking at. It's not something that we obviously have the funding for at this time, but it's something that we're looking at. I think those are pretty much the big ones. We met with Chris Spross, walked through the, what we call the L, L building, just because of its shape. I don't know what it's actually supposed to be called. We walked through it, talked about some tenant improvements with it, and been back and forth with Chris on some drawings in regards to, to that. Other than that, it's just been busy, and little meetings here and there, trying to square away projects. There is one project that we've been working on for about two years, and very excited when it comes on board, because I think it'll smooth out some information flow between us and the district attorney's office. And that's through, it's through a Motorola program, but it's called Command Central. And so it'll allow us to provide better access to the DA's office for photos and videos, and it'll allow us to upload photos directly from our cameras, which are our cellphones now, right into that system. It'll also allow us to input Ring doorbells and other cameras that we can collect from businesses or from private security systems directly into that system and make them available to the district attorney's office. And so it definitely smoothes out some, some wrinkles that we've had, and should, hopefully, once it's up and operational, be a time saver for the, for the staff. It's something that they sold us on two years ago, only to hold back a piece of information that, that wasn't compatible with our server, even though they knew our server, because they just sold it to us. And so they got a strongly worded letter and some angry me at them, and they fixed it. So we're up and going.
Thanks, Sheriff. Pam?
I just wanted to mention that Linda and Erin are gone to a conference, meetings in Ely this week, and then second installment of taxes are due October 2.
All right. Thank you. So we'll move next to Claims and Payroll and Transmittals. Our last public comment. Meeting's adjourned.